Rock to the ladies, nothing like a little excitement. I know what I'm thankful for.
Okay. It's six forty-five and I'll call the May thirteenth Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order. And if you advise with me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand as one nation under your indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you beautiful and we do have Tracy absent from her funeral this evening, so Matt's going to call the board for us.
Sure.
Yes, Steve.
Here.
April.
Here.
Shannon.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Tracy.
Excuse.
Me, I'm here. Heidi.
Here.
Thank you and we've established a forum for tonight's meeting. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shocker.
Yes.
Treasure Gilmore.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes. Agenda is adopted, that brings us to gratitude. Now open up the tables.
From out there. Coming from a track meet tonight. Just thankful for all the people that helped organize that and make it run smoothly. It's one of the longer sporting events that you could go to and just sit there and watch, but it was, it was very, very nice this evening. We finished up before the meeting and it's always good thing, so thank you for that all.
I'm thankful for the festivities that were put on for the seniors on their last day of school. I thought it was pretty neat and grateful to all the parents that volunteered their time to go and have food out.
That was good. And I'm glad they put it on social media too, so we can all see it.
Yeah.
I'm grateful that they didn't make them walk down to the middle school again.
Oh, that was a great idea. Well, you know.
Then somebody had heat stroke last year, I think, from doing that.
And grateful for the lift up, they did that again and it's, it's long, but it's really good incorporated the, the little kids. So it was pretty neat.
Grateful for the music program after last week was all the end of year concerts, all the seniors and everything, so band choir, all that stuff. Grateful for it.
I'm grateful for all the moms that are serving on the board and administration and I don't know every, which way to say that, but I'm just grateful for that.
I'm grateful for the staff, we celebrated last week, the staff, in every meeting, the staff appreciates you very much. And then just very thankful for the continued progress within the Kina Beach, that project continues to be ahead of schedule and on track for a healthy turnover time. Which will give us some window to move into it before the school year starts in twenty twenty-five, so we're excited for that. I had a patron at the library tell me today that Cedar Springs has come a long way, so we're doing the good work.
That was nice.
Yeah.
Did she know you're on the board or she was just making? All right, high school representatives, I think we have a report.
So I am the senior member of the group, so I will begin the high school report tonight. So our, we could not get a junior student council member to join us this evening, they're busy doing AP testing and a host of other things at this time of year, so. They did want to share that they had a very successful prom with almost four hundred students attending and he made a profit of four thousand dollars.
Wow.
And they did say that the staff, Thousand Oaks, complimented the students and the chaperones on the behavior of our students, so. Two times up for that, that was Betsy Tesk, who is our research and teachers advisor and also our student council advisor. Need update.
Thank you. Moving on, we have our consent items that are before us, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Vice President Shocker.
Yes.
Treasure Gilmore.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes. Motion carries. We move it to our discussion items and our first discussion item is twenty-four, twenty-five handbook revision proposals.
So we've had a month to chew on that. Didn't know if you had any specific questions, this is one of those items that we have on the agenda for multiple meetings, so it gives us a chance, it's a, it's a pretty lofty set of documents, so it gives us a chance to review those things and as questions come up, I can put them on the list and get kind of an FAQ document together to share with the board in our, in our June. So it gives us plenty of time to respond to the questions, but also gives you time to really think through carefully about what, what it is that we're adapting as far as language goes, we technically have really three meetings after this one that we can use to discuss this and still have plenty of time to provide buildings with enough window to make adjustments as needed for the upcoming school year. So are there any questions or sections that jump out that you'd like some further explanation on at future meeting?
Nothing jumped out so far.
I've got some that I can email over.
Okay.
Looking at some higher level things about how certain proposals line up with the current house that we have, sort of cell phones and then the proposed no backlogs. So I'll, I'll email that over, those, that's, those are my wonders. More information.
Perfect.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
High school leadership courses proposed name change agenda, here link and that is on for action tonight.
Yes, thank you Heidi, this is a second read of the suggestion that we change the agricultural science course that's been called Leadership for Tomorrow to distinguish it from a course that is of the same standards, same body of work, but not for ag-science F A students. For students who are in other leadership opportunities, so we would still continue to have the agricultural science leadership course as it has been with that same stakeholder group as our target, but we would also then add as an opportunity to have a student leaders course aside from that ag-science arm of work at the high school, so any questions you might have about that? And again, that would be up to the master scheduling to determine whether that course actually runs or not, it would be dependent on whether it would have been in the schedule and we have enough students or don't have enough students in it, so it's not a guaranteed course that we would be having, but we wanted to have the opportunity to explore that.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to discussion, I have seen financial update with Matt.
All right, we've had opportunity to see both the general fund month to date report as well as the bond budget, does anybody have any questions on either of those two documents before I get into the finance report? All right. Some of these will also be covering on the twenty-four, twenty-five initial budget presentation, but I wanted to go over a few things. Last week, we were receiving notice that we did receive three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars in section twenty-three G, My Kids Back on Track grant, that was a grant that Jen and I worked together to submit to the state. About half of those funds will be spent this fiscal year. The remaining balance will be deferred into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and spent down next fiscal year. Something I did not include, but wanted to mention, we do have several upcoming bids that we will be presenting in at the June tenth board meeting, we currently have two bids posted, one for beach door access controls and then beach camera installation, both tied to the, the bond project. And then two others, we have JV softball field fencing, my understanding is probably about seven to eight years ago, we removed the outfield fence, this will do a competitive bid to put new fencing and new backstop all around the JV softball fence or field, you know, those field are being used essentially on a nightly basis, so it is become a bit of a safety concern not having those fences there. And then the, the final bids are related to food service, as you know, we have the excess costs that we have to spend down to the food service fund balance, so Holly and I walked the middle school cafeteria, we will be doing a bid for new middle school cafeteria tables and then some additional food service equipment at the middle school, specifically I had a combi oven that can both heat and steam. So those will be some RFPs that we present for action at the June meeting. Kind of diving into first look at the twenty-four, twenty-five school aid budgets. So the, all three, the, the House Executive and the Senate have all released their budgets now. The next major step is on Friday when they have the CREC, which is the consensus revenue estimating conference, that's when they, the economists and the state budget people would get together, do an updated forecast on what the current year revenues are for this fiscal year as well as going forward. And that really kind of starts the negotiation between the, the executive branch, the House and the Senate as they work through their budget proposals. So we'll know a lot more next week as far as kind of what funding is available for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Based on the governor's school aid budget proposal, there is it, it is once again a very generous budget proposal, which is great, but there is some significant concern about the ability for the state to sustain that level of funding for the foreseeable future. So this next slide here, I'll blow it up a little bit. So we started the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four with two point two billion dollars in the school aid fund balance. We're projecting to end the school aid fund balance at five hundred and sixty-four million dollars at June thirtieth, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, the state's fiscal year. The governor's proposal for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five has that fund balance going all the way down to twelve million dollars. And then forecasting it increasing back up to about two hundred and twenty-five million for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Twelve million dollars is not a lot in that reserve for that fund balance for the entire, all the school systems in the state of Michigan, so it will leave us quite vulnerable to the ebbs and flows of the economy, if the economy were to take a turn for the worse. Her proposal for twenty-four, twenty-five is currently one point, one four billion dollars less than what's the total expenditures for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year were, so they are reckon, they're bringing down the spending as well as recognizing part of that is just overall fewer students in the state of Michigan impacts that number as well. All three budgets include a range for the per pupil increase between two and a quarter percent up to three point one percent on the per group, per pupil foundation allowance, in the past two years, it's been five percent year over year. Looks like we might have one more year of that section twenty-two L transportation funding, that was the five hundred, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we received back in April when they received our final allocation, so it looks like we may have one more year of that funding in twenty-four, twenty-five. And they continue to do the universal pre-breakfast and lunch for all students. One thing I want to put on your radar, I don't know how this will turn out, but the governor's proposal has includes freeing up six hundred and seventy million dollars of funding that historically have been going to fund the unfunded portion of the other post-employment benefits, so retiree healthcare. There's kind of two buckets that fund the, the UAA, it's, this districts all pay in about twenty-one percent of every dollar spent on compensation that goes to fund pension and the healthcare retirement, then the state on top of that throws in another about seventeen percent that funds those two unfunded liabilities, the healthcare portion of it is now fully funded, so the governor's proposal is saying we're going to take seven percent off of the contribution that the state put into the pension system and use the, that six hundred and seventy million dollars to fund other other projects or initiatives in K twelve. Other school groups are saying, well, we would prefer we, instead of paying twenty-one percent, we pay fourteen percent and essentially that would be a seven percent savings on our retirement costs that we could then take those funds and reallocate them to classrooms. So I don't know where it will land, it would require a change to state law, but the latter, the reducing it from twenty-one to fourteen percent could result in approximately one point three to one point five million dollars in reduction, reduced retirement costs for the district, so this could be a game changer, of course, if it goes through. I don't, I couldn't tell you which way it's going to go, but I wanted to make you aware of it, so in next January, when, if it does show up, that we've kind of discussed it and know what it is. So any questions on any of that, what's kind of a longer one today?
No questions, want to say congratulations on the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar grant.
Thank you.
That's awesome, that's a huge change. And then yeah, looking forward to potentially getting our responsibility of retirement down to fourteen, so that'd be great.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving pieces, it's too early, early to determine what direction it will go, but definitely being discussed and negotiated as we speak, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, we have the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five academic student services purchase and professional development plan.
All right, so this is the second time we are seeing this, this time it is a little bit more complete than it was the first time, as we were still working on getting estimated costs from some of the vendors that we work with. There are really five items on this list of the different things that we order and use year over year that require more of education approval. And those items exceed the spending threshold that requires us to come to you for some approval. So those items include curriculum associate I-ready, A D M R, the Ebbel, Ebbel et al training, the math learning center updated third edition resource and finally the early learning for in the E C C, the early learning for interventionists. Everything else on this list is really to help you see a comprehensive picture of the items that we purchase and maintain year after year and to help you see some of the financial evaluation that those require in future years, should we decide to continually those resources. So I'm glad to answer any questions you have about any of them, but really the five that exceed that threshold that requires more of education approval is what we're hoping to get approval for this evening so that we can move forward with the work that happens, starting now and really racing until July first.
Thank you for the list as we pass it down, and it's helpful to, I really appreciate the full list too, but it's helpful to have the ones pulled out, so thank you for that.
There are a couple of them here, just folded, full trade guarantee that are a little, that look like they are above the threshold that, that twenty-seven thousand roughly, threshold, twenty-nine thousand threshold. And one of those is Power School, the reason that we're not bringing that for approval is because it's really actually two different products of Power School and they each fall underneath that whole threshold, so if you're looking at that thirty-eight thousand dollars and saying, well, how come we aren't bringing this one? That's because it's really actually two separate products that are invoiced separately and I represented them together here on, on this page.
Thank you.
Any questions, if I need those?
Any questions on that? Okay, good, thank you. All right, moving on reproductive health advisory committee recommendations, Jen's still at bat.
Yes, I am, so you have introduced the agenda from our meeting that we had in April that represents the body of work that happens every other year to review our reproductive health curriculum and to bring to use some recommendations from that committee, it's a pretty large committee of people and so really there are six changes that the reproductive health committee is bringing to you for approval and ten things that continue, so I kind of wanted to hear both of those, the recommendation is that we continue with the longstanding relationship we have with Willing to Wait, that we continue to use that resource. So there were some new members of our committee this year who had lots of questions about that, but really when, when we asked Willing to Wait to kind of present, what did the data look like, what are our students saying, what are the outcomes that we're receiving? And we took a look at all of that, then Willing to Wait steps out of the room so that we can have an open conversation without going to air and really the consensus is, we should stick with this, it, it's doing what it needs to do with our students. So the things that are staying the same, we would continue to use Willing to Wait. Some changes that are coming, the motion to include the Plan B information at the high school level and I want you to hear the reason why for that, because that was probably our longest conversation was about that particular item, so students walk in asking for that information and the, the teachers and the instructors from Willing to Wait have had to say, oh well, you'll have to ask about that. Different from any other of the different things they're talking about, where they're able to say, here are pros and cons and this is a decision you'd be making with a trusted adult or a family member, which is really their stance, so here's pros and cons and now you're making that decision with someone that you trust as an adult. The Saks in the Dark activity, you all, for that last time, same with the motion to continue to include external female anatomy, the anatomy lesson at the high school level. Motion to continue to include LGBTQIA plus statistics. Something new, we've often said no thank you to the promotional materials that Willing to Wait hands out, but that was because in many cases it was stickers and what students do with stickers in a facility is put them all over everything, which creates a problem for the people who play in the facility and maintain it. So we asked them specifically, what are the, you know, things being adopted, so t-shirts, hats and what's called an ATM card, which is reminder, visual reminder that I'm, I'm going to control my life and decisions that are based on my goals. At the middle of all, a change that we're making, and this is different than what other schools do, is separating by gender for all of the lessons. The reasoning for that is because the students ask much better questions when they're not around someone of the same, of an opposite gender from them, they're more willing to open up when they can ask their very honest questions. We'll continue to include internal female anatomy and external male anatomy at the middle level in those anatomy lessons. We'll continue to include the harm of pornography and actually there was been a discussion about really making that a little bit bigger with the help of some of our S R O's and local law enforcement to talk about some of the things that happen when you have one of these in your hand and the things that you might be asked, you know, to do or send, so that was something that we talked quite a bit about. Continuing to include the efficacy rates of contraception, again, you can see having other promotional materials minus the shoelaces, I'm not sure why, but shoelaces cause a real problem at the middle level, so just shirts and ATM cards. So that's the middle level, at the upper level, there is a new vendor who provides the materials for Willing to Wait and so we need to either approve to use that updated set of resources, or we would need to choose a new, a new provider, we wouldn't be able to use Willing to Wait because they're not able to do the lessons without us implementing the upgraded licensing. That also means that our elementaries move from four lessons to five lessons and that's because they've expanded the, based on some feedback from adults, but also from our students, there needs to be a little bit more talk about what is the difference between positive peer pressure and negative peer pressure and what happens when you get one of these and how that changes, so just the changing times and Willing to Wait is adapting to that. Again, we are motioning to separate on all genders, gender for all lessons at the elementary level. And then some bigger picture themes at all levels, often are Willing to Wait instructors are asked questions and we have to make a choice as a district, how do we want to approach that? Do we want to allow this outside vendors to answer, or do we want our instructors to answer? So we're fortunate that the Willing to Wait folks that we use, our people that we use time after time after time and our educators have built pretty good relationships with them and so they do a real nice, you know, I know the communities, I work here every day and some questions would be better if a counselor were involved and so we're going to report that up to the administration or to the counseling team. Some questions are better to say, boy, that's really something you should talk about with your parents, so they have a real nice give and take about that. And then last, the motion to continue to allow Willing to Wait to implement minor changes, when there's a typographical error, they're allowed to use a new untypographical error corrected version in their materials that they use in front of students. So that's really kind of a broad overview of, of the work that we did and the recommendations, I'm glad to answer any questions about that.
Did you, at the middle level, separating the genders, did you discuss at all what might happen with non-binary students or students who are trans?
Yep, that was something that we would need to our administrators and our mental health counseling team so that they have the chance to know that student and work with that student and that student's family to make a decision that's right for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for that question.
Not on for action tonight, we'll be, we'll see it next.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're back.
Thank you. Alrighty, Matty, you're back up to bed with twenty-five, twenty-four initial budget conversation.
All right, first slide we've already covered, we're looking at probably a two and a quarter to three point one percent increase to the foundation allowance, I think I'll probably make assumptions somewhere in the, in the book but really make that call probably next week, once we kind of have a chance to digest the CREC. Other, oh, I didn't mention, in addition to the transportation category, they are looking to continue the declining enrollment stabilization funding, so that would be something that, some additional funds that we would capture because we do fit into that category. All of our S R three funds must be expended no later than September thirtieth of this year. So we will, we are on track to have that, the final purchases will be the classroom furniture for beach, which will be paid out slightly in August of this year. And, and again, we, our enrollment trend continues to be a, an area of concern, we are down four hundred and sixty-nine F T Es since the nineteen twenties school year and are still projecting to see a decline in our enrollment for the, at least next five years. So some challenges that we're facing for next year and beyond, the initial projections, if we didn't change anything, we would project a Um we would project a two point five million, two point six million dollar deficit for the twenty four, twenty five school year. The large driver of that is the declining enrollment as well as the uh drop of the S R funds. Those are coming off the books. You know, next year, our per pupil uh funding will not increase as much as it has in the past. And that's a, the next one of these slides will show, we we do have an organizational F T E imbalance. Our ratio of uh staff to students, employees to students. Is out of alignment with our current number of students. Um and and real, one of the real big challenges is public schools are now expected to do more uh than ever before. All these additional services that, you know, schools are now expected to provide uh really. Kind of puts a pinch on the budget as well. A lot of those services came about throughout the pandemic and we received S R funds to. Uh implement these programs and now those funds are gone. Some of the needs, the needs may still be there, but the funding mechanism mechanism is no longer there. So uh we're gonna have to make some tough decisions going forward.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You just talked about class size. So what's going to drive what the magic number is in a grade building? Or age situation like does Maddie get a spreadsheet? He goes down, he says, oh, everybody's a twenty five, or what does that look like?
Dan tracks those. Tracks um class sizes uh across the board and has been doing so. So we've got a little running tracker. Some of it is projection, but the kindergarten enrollment is the big question mark. Um you can have an understanding or at least a decent prediction as to what's going into. What we'll have in first grade based on what we have in kindergarten. And then, you know, kind of follow the classes up. But the big question mark is kindergarten.
And then like in the high school, what do we do about kids signing up? But how does that magic number work?
Yeah, so it's a combination of, and I'll let Mr. Simmons jump into it if you want, but it's a combination of, you know, we know how many students. There are in the high school, we know how many teachers we have in the high school, we know the the perfect number, the optimal number of sections. But then we know that we have some sections, some classes like band, which are over the perfect, through the ideal number. Some sections are a little bit under, so you you have kind of a general idea, but then you have to, you know, you gotta be thoughtful. And say yes, you know, to some things and say no to other things. If we want to run a, you know, a section of a class with fourteen students in it. That means you're gonna have to run three sections of something else with thirty students in it in order to maintain that level of balance. Um which is doable, you know, to a point, but it again, as as we move further into this progressive. Um right sizing exercise, we're gonna have to say no to more.
Well, that's my wonder of the process and does the land, does all land on Mr. Simmons? I mean, that's my question of that process. They're a bigger.
Yeah.
Is it not a side role?
I mean, they came to us with a general kind of a first look at the staffing plan. And then we've pushed back and said, you know, we'd like to, what's that plan look like? We find less teachers. And so we're trying to find a a middle ground that works for students and still provides them with the opportunities to take the paths that they're looking for. It might not be the case that we could run it past every year, so maybe it's we run it every other year. Or we run it, you know, in such a way that at least at some point in time with proper planning. If that's a particular elective class that they're really looking for, they could at least get it at some point in time in their building.
We haven't been here for a while, not that we want to be here, but we're here.
Yeah, thi- this next chart is the general fund headcount. Um so I I ran payroll reports for the first pay in June, going all the way back to June of two thousand nineteen. Um and then ran for the twenty three, twenty four school year, I ran our most recent uh payroll, which was uh May thirteenth. Uh I believe it. Uh no, I'm sorry, May third. Um so you can see the the blue here is certified staff members who are covered under the C S E A agreements. So we have the same number of headcounts. Back in uh June of two thousand nineteen. We had a hundred and ninety eight certified staff members that would have hit payroll. May third of this year, we had a hundred and ninety eight certified staff that hit payroll. Uh this orange is our hourly staff. Uh we had ninety seven. Uh now we have a hundred and twenty six. But if you recall, we brought our facilities care services or custodial services back in house. So twenty nine of that increase are facility cares team members. Uh and then this number up here is our admin slash salaried, I guess, district wide uh employees. So going back to nineteen, had eighteen, eighteen of those admin salaried employees, now we're at thirty two. Um again, part of this, that increase also reflects, uh we brought some services back in house. So previously, the I T department was contracted through the I S D. So we had two, two members. Um two of these numbers in this thirty two relate to I T services. And then we also had two that their position shifted from hourly up to salaried. Um and then we have uh the Assistant Director of Facilities Cares is also there. So we've shifted how we do some things uh in the district over those uh five-year period or six-year period. Um but you can see, you know, in the same time, our enrollment has been going down, our staffing. As state level or increased slightly over that same period of time. That's really kind of driving uh the the need to right-size our staffing model. So, you know, big shift turns slowly, right? Um so this isn't something we're going to fix in one fiscal year. I think Lacher Scott referenced, you know, he could lose thirty pounds if he cut off his leg. But that's not going to be uh a good outcome for him. Well, so that's, this is, we're kind of in the same situation. Uh we're not looking to. Make all these adjustments in one fiscal year. It will be a multi-year process, um but we do need to start. Uh so for some opportunities for next year, you know, obviously, we do have a very strong fund balance. Which does allow us to take a more gradual uh approach to uh the change implementation that we need to uh. Get started at. So we're targeting reductions of one point two to one point six million dollars for next year. The balance coming, wouldn't come out of fund balance. So we would start spending down uh fund balance. Um you know, we have an opportunity to right-size the organization in district services, facilities and operations as well as. Instruction. One thing that I uh at jotted down, I might know is next year, we'll start to charge food service a indirect cost rate. Uh so that basically recognizes that uh I put time in, Scott puts in time. Uh human services, we have, we do all the utilities for food service. So it's. It's really recognizing all the indirect costs that go into running the program. So we will look to recapture about a hundred thousand dollars from the food service program that will go into the general fund and help uh. Ease some of that deficit. Um and earlier I discussed the excess fund balance. It will also, we're starting to get. Food service in very good shape as far as cafeteria equipment, uh kitchen equipment, tables. So this also, that is an allowable uh expenditure for the excess costs in the food service program. So our initial plans for twenty four, twenty five and beyond, um in district services wise. Dan Scoville uh will be taking on the K five curriculum as well as uh still human services. Ron Baronwall will be taking on six twelve curriculum while also doing the work uh work-based learning program. The Assistant Director in Student Services, she will be retiring at the end of uh June, so that position will not be replaced. Um and then we did the uh business services reductions when Matt Andres left. We initially did a point four reduction, but we've kind of found that that might have been a little bit uh too aggressive. Um Carrie is working more thirty two hours a week, so we we have her back up to a a point eight. But we still have a point two F T savings in the Business Services Office. Uh on the operations front, we're looking to save four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh the major uh bulk of that is coming from moving eighth grade back to middle school. And having all three grades uh in one building. Uh that allows us to eliminate one building administrator position. Uh as you know, Bill is moving uh has accepted a position at a different school system. Uh so we are able to not replace one building administrator. Uh we'll also have some savings on transportation. There will be less shuttling between buildings. Um and then, you know, we'll have fewer students riding in bus, so that will allow for potentially fewer. Bus routes as well as shorter routes. So each route, there's a per diem rate just to for them to pull out of the parking lot. And then if it's a longer, that covers the first four hours. If it's a five-hour route, there's an additional cost to that. So uh we should see some savings on transportation next year. Um and then we're reassessing uh in-house versus external services. So did that back uh when we brought custodial services back in house. Uh one thing that we'll be looking at is snow plowing services. Um with all of the facility caretakers that we have, do any of them have the uh ability? And desire to also push snow um those in individuals in tandem with Vic's team. Um we're gonna take a look at that, see where the numbers land, and if it makes sense, we'll propose doing that. Um and then we'll be taking this building offline in the near future, so that should have some savings on our utility costs.
So I have a question on that one.
Yep.
Uh if this is going to be. Full storage as you said, your storage, I I think there are some outside community things that happen over in that way. Is that like uh like Dan, Dan has a couple of rings?
Yeah, I've been sharing with them that this will be cold.
Okay.
Cold storage. And so they shouldn't be making some alternative plans. Same with them, like we have a. Community arts or community theater program that does some storage here as well. And I think those are just. This is not an ideal site. We had a bird on the second floor who extinguished himself or herself, I don't know. Uh in the lounge or in the kitchen mail copy area today after releasing themselves. For most of the weekend, uh so it was quite a mess.
Sure.
And that's what Vic started his day with today, so. Uh yeah, it's just a, it's a really tired building that needs to, it's only going to. Gain momentum in the deterioration direction once we move out. So we're gonna have to have some serious conversations about it.
We've been talking about moving out of this building since Matt and I started on the board. It would be interesting to see it actually happen.
It's in the plans.
Thank you. Good. Alright.
Any other base questions?
Well, I had a question about one of the the box you didn't cover under instruction. Talking about um lower expenditures on dual enrollment tuition, is that just because of the lower amount of students or?
Participation.
Okay.
And and that's one that's somewhat hard to project, predict in. Now in late May, early June for the next school year, because we don't receive, receive the first semester invoice in October. And then the the second semester in January, February. So it's a little bit harder to predict, but you can say the last. What I budgeted for this year will, it will come in under what I budgeted. Um and that same happened last year.
That, I wonder if we're, if we're having. Classes at the high school that the kids can't take, if then they will turn to doing enrollment and possibly that could go up based on if they can't get it. If there's not a class available in the high school for them, potentially, potentially.
I I don't know that it cleanly fits in this topic, but I know we had talked just at a high level, I forget if it was last meeting or meeting before about. There may be potential um to increase revenue uh to help us out by offering some. Classes to some homeschool folks that maybe wouldn't, weren't comfortable teaching math. There might be a way to kind of reintroduce some people to the public school after COVID. Um I don't know if you guys have had, I know that's, that's a big piece of work and it's probably conceptual when you rolled it out. There probably hasn't been any thought, but I don't know if that's something you think will have an impact in this budget or if you see that really being a year out. And just in terms of putting some foundation together.
Yeah, it won't be twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six would be early if that would start to.
No, okay, thank you.
It's on the shopping list.
Yeah.
It's not in the cart yet.
Yeah.
It's not on the counter, it's not on the stove.
Yeah.
It's definitely on the list.
Okay, I just was thinking with the fund balance, since we've got some lead time, we've got some time to to invest in things like that before we really hit.
Check the order of operations. I met with Cassandra. Uh shared here this morning or today in regard to his early childhood and how we can look to start to maximize that red hot space for that program. Um so we're looking at, you know, the possibility of moving um all of our campus kids programming over that space. That would make a lot of sense. There's, again, we've worked through some logistics, but um you know, looking at expanding preschool. Potentially providing childcare out of that space. Um so really, there's a lot in the hot work. Uh but those programs are all very similar to things that we're currently doing, so those will be, you know, low hanging fruit as far as. Enhancing the, really the provision of services for our community. And particularly in the area of preschool and and childcare.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And staying at the podium. Oh, yes, twenty four, twenty five proposed ten I S D budget, staying at podium for the next two weeks.
Alright, so uh you've seen this before, you are uh state law requires that. School boards on an annual basis uh review and approve their local I F D general fund budget. Uh the Kent I S D also presents to you uh their special fund, uh special revenue funds as well. Some general fund uh considerations that they incorporated in their budget was a a six point five percent increase in property tax value. Uh the two point five percent increase in the uh state aid uh per pupil foundation allowance. Um and then significant investment income, uh given the the interest rates are currently holding steady. Um on the expense side, they have settled on a three point five percent wage increase. Um and one large increase would be their risk management, a fifteen percent increase. A lot of that is being driven by uh cybersecurity. Um it's becoming harder and harder to uh for insurance companies to uh provide that coverage unless certain boxes are checked. But there, we will likely experience the same increase in our uh risk management expenditures. So bottom line, they're projecting to add just shy of. So bottom line, they're projecting to add uh just shy of one million dollars to their general fund fund balance. For the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, twenty five, sorry. Based on my review, my recommendation would be for board to uh approve the budget as presented. Um, you know, me personally, I get a lot out of the interaction that I have with the uh school business officials at the I S D. Um, you know, as well as have a monthly meeting with other business officials from other local districts that the I S D coordinates them. So I really appreciate all the services that they offer. My recommendation would be for approving the budgets.
Thank you. Are they impacted at all? Do they lose students or are they having to make cuts or are they kind of solid?
They would, their um, their state aid membership, I would imagine, will be declining because it is an overall um decrease in the number of students that. School age kids that are in the state of Michigan. Um, I do know uh K C T C currently is full, probably have been wrong that.
Yeah, we had the, we were denied slots, I mean, this is the lowest amount of. Acceptance we've received just because they don't have a slot to rest the traditional. And I can't speak to the why behind it, it's just the facts where we, for the number of kids. That sought K C T C's juniors and seniors next year, uh, this was the the most that had been denied. And I think it comes down to just demand from other districts also seeking set of assignments.
And I think that's one of the reasons why our emphasis on work-based learning and essentially creating our own. Um, work experiences for our students by partnering with our business community is a a nice alternative. You know, for some of our students, just a different way to accomplish a similar similar objective.
So the people that are turned down for the slots, are we hooking them up with Mr. Baronwall or what is that box of foot play?
That's why we've been very, I mean, that's why we've been very intentional about trying to, you know, really market Mr. B. You know, we've been trying to get that in the newsletter, get that out to the kids, get that out to our our staff, because. Be blunt, not many people know about W B L or not enough, you know, so we're we're trying to market just what an opportunity that is. Mister B's vision is intended to get half of our cohorts into work-based learning. To align with the fact that fifty one percent of our kids go right from that graduation stage on the twenty third to work on the twenty fourth. So that makes sense, right? Fifty percent, fifty one percent of our kids going to work right away, we should go to half that core cohort. Utopia utopian vision would be half that code also work-based learning, so it's a. Seamless transition into the workforce. Um, so we have to promote it, we have to market it more, we have to, we I have to do a better job.
So when they sign up for classes, is that a box to check work-based learning or do you have to sideline your way into it?
Um, I don't, I don't think it's a side line, I don't, I can't say, I'm not in the room when they're scheduling, so I can't say that. It's a box to check, um. It's what I can tell you is to get into work-based learning, a couple of things have to happen. You have to have, that has to be part of your educational development plan, your E D P. For instance, it's not like field days of co-op, you may remember, you know, where it's basically uh if you say you want to go into. I don't know, agriculture, then you shouldn't be doing your W B L at Mickey D's. It has to align to your educational development plan. The other part of it is you have to get a course to graduate. Uh, to even look at K C T C, it's ten credits after your sophomore year, uh work-based learning after uh sophomore year seminar, you have to be on course. To do so, and then and then from there, uh, it just has to be a great fit both ways. We don't want to put um anybody into a business that's representing our school that's not ready to represent our school. Mister Baronwell takes great pride in that representation. So those are just some steps that we go through to place kids. But again, I take it personally, if I gotta do a better job marketing.
We'll take you up on that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So just a couple of questions, this is a a take it or leave it, like you we approve it or we don't, but we don't get a chance to provide feedback and have them adjusted down. It's it's kind of, it is what it is, you either accept or you don't, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, uh, another question as we're as we're kind of milling this over is um that fifteen percent increase in risk management that's the I T security. We just got done talking about headcount and that we've been sourced some I T, do we get benefit from that fifteen percent I T security that the I S D is investing in or do we not because we're doing I T in house?
Um, so that is, no, we will have some additional expenditures, purchase services in our I T department related to uh cybersecurity. So that basically we will be insurable, uh, so uh. Penetration testing, some phishing testing to kind of identify where are these weaknesses. We did some fish fish phishing testing uh about a month or two ago, and we did have a handful of uh staff members. Take the bait and click on the what would have been a a bad link. But yes, if the, we do have some services through the I S D still that are related to I T. Um, so any upgrades that they make that impact those ser- services, we do benefit from.
Okay, I just was saying, if everybody gets an equal cut, maybe there's no opportunity to do something different. I just was thinking the other alternative was um I T through the I S D, which we did before. So I just was wondering if this was an equal cut or if they, if we got a discount because we had our own I T staff, that was not wondering. Because it would seem like if you're increasing in I T, that the folks that contest would pay their fair share of that versus equal split.
Yes, yeah, it it gets allocated uh based on the level. Most of the I T's uh I S D services are allocated based on uh your allocation of F T count in the county. So if, you know, we have ten percent of the F Ts in the county and it costs a million dollars to operate this one service, we would be paying a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
We'll move on to our lawn care bids.
Alright, uh, several weeks uh ago, we posted a R P for lawn care services in the district. We had two uh two vendors uh reply to that R P, World Rep Landscaping and Bob's Asphalt and Paving. Did post bid meetings with uh Bob's Asphalt to ensure that they correctly understood the full scope of service. Um, and gave them the opportunity to uh withdraw their bid if they had any misunderstanding. Because as you can see, they came in about seven hundred and twenty one dollars less than World Rep Landscaping. That's on a per cut basis. So based on that post bid interview and Russell's uh calling the references provided by uh Bob's Asphalt and Paving. Uh, his recommendation would be to award the. Landscaping contract to Bob's Asphalt and Paving. One of their references, I believe, was Ravanna Public School. Uh, I don't know if Russell was able to connect with them, but he did connect with two to three of their references and they all had glowing uh reviews for this company. Based on if we cut once a week for twenty six weeks, this is a projected savings of eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty one dollars. So um, starting, you know, it's it's every every dollar counts, so this would be a good start. So based on everything, Russell's recommendation would be to award this uh contract to uh Bob's Asphalt and Paving.
Do you know what we're doing per cuts currently?
Um, it is currently twenty nine hundred.
Yeah. Just talked about it, was that compared to the twenty nine hundred?
I know, as compared to the thirty.
Still safe.
Still safe.
Yeah, thank you.
And I I want to say it's closer to three thousand.
Sure.
I only wondering and probably again, this is out there since I think it's we're kind of new in the the journey, but do we have any students in Ron's program that were going into landscaping? And if they did, would we be able to use that uh work program working for the school or would that be a conflict of interest?
So we did actually get a proposal from one of our fifth graders. His dad works in the business office and he's putting together a little lawn care service, it's sitting on my desk.
You can just buy a commercial grade lawnmower.
Yeah, um, but to get, uh, as I understand it, uh, in order for a student to receive work-based learning credit, they cannot work for the district.
I wonder about that.
Yeah, they can work for other districts, but they can't work that right for me, that option. Yeah, there's just a stipulation in the law that are in the school uh school code.
And then we don't want any any perception of that, so that makes sense, I just thought it asked.
But Bob's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'd assume landscaping, uh, the the student would have to be eighteen to operate the equipment.
I saw a draft contract in there for three years, is that what we're looking to do?
Yes.
And would it be that uh price for three years or is there?
I increasing no more than three percent annually.
It has the numbers in the contract.
Um, one thing I will ask Russell to do is I'm gonna look at the uh potentially. As I mentioned, we were looking at, does it make sense to bring some things in-house? So I might look at if we make that decision to bring it in-house, how will we exit the contract potentially? But we're we're still up here thinking.
I do have a question, um, those, do we like, so that's a third period, that's mowing the the yards and such. Do they have background checks, like are since they're pretty on school property, when students are uh at school, like is there?
Yes, we would require background checks.
Okay.
How many cuts per year, per year ticket?
Uh, we usually start cutting. Early May, late April through, I think last year is through end of October, so roughly twenty six cuts.
Yeah, I think that contract called out thirty, had a number thirty in there. As a reference point.
And then, and then it goes on to their extra couple of pieces.
Alright, thank you.
I think that's on for action tonight because the press. Alright, last discussion item superintendent evaluation.
Uh, so one of the responsibilities of the board on an annual basis is to provide new feedback and job performance. Um, we typically uh run that out in June, uh, so we get ahead of that a little bit because it is a pretty extensive. Body of work uh tonight in board book, there are four um artifacts that have been uploaded. So the first artifact you'll find is just a one page, it's actually a front and back summary. From M A S B that just talks about the superintendent evaluation process and the tool that we use. Uh, we use advanced ed is our rubric. Um, the second two documents that are linked, uh, one is just the uh superintendent evaluation instrument. And that is an actual spreadsheet that you can go in and uh do some scoring, do some uh manipulating on. The third document is a PDF of that, so if you want to print it and just look through it, um, you you'd be able to look at that document that way. The fourth document that I included uh was just my own self-reflection. You know, I went through the document and as I have in previous years and looking at the body of work that I've done, looking at the artifacts that I have to support that work. Um, you know, I've shared before that my evaluation is really a reflection of the outstanding work of this team. Um, you know, and so many of the things will be artifacts, perhaps that others have contributed to our work over the course of the year. But at least for us to get started, uh, you've got the summary, you've got the actual uh sub uh tool that they use from M A S B. You've got my um self-reflection and um by the end of May, I'll launch for you um more collections of. Uh, supporting documents uh that you'll be able to reference throughout the month of June as you work through the process as a board to. And see where your views are relative to uh that rubric and uh to provide me with feedback in areas in which I can grow.
And we've been getting all this email blast from M A S B, look at the new form, do this, do that, that new form does not take a bet until the next year after July. I reached out to Mister Jay Bennett, and so we're good to go right now. And I think my thinking is we'll get a, I don't think there's a lot to change, the form is the form, we already have our process down, so. We're not gonna look to make work here, but we'll see. Happy reading to us.
Yeah.
Alright, that brings us to the portion of our meeting where we have public comments and this will be the time that you could address the board for three minutes and the board won't be responding, but Mister. Smith will be following up, so do we have any takers for public comment at this time? Going twice. Three times and public comments votes, thank you, alright. Action items for tonight, we have before us the twenty twenty four, twenty five academic student services purchases and professional development plan.
I will make a motion to approve what was presented tonight for the five items. Uh, the first being curriculum associates have made diagnostic assessments, not to exceed thirty three thousand. The next being the E B L I E T S L not to exceed a hundred and five thousand. Uh, the third being the math learning center bridges updated third edition, not to exceed fifty thousand. Uh, the fourth being early learning course, not to exceed thirty five thousand, finally the A B M R, not to exceed seventy thousand.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say my husband will be very pleased if we get the third edition of Bridges. He's wishing for that in his school right now, so.
Alright, having no further discussion, I'm calling for the vote, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. The second uh action item is twenty twenty four, twenty five proposal for the Kent I S D budget and center program budgets. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
For discussion. Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Did you have a discussion?
Do you have?
You can just.
No, that's right, I my my question is what happens if we don't approve it? So then the the I S D and I, I don't see us doing that because we gain a lot of value from the I S D. It's just as we evaluate, I'm just curious, what's the impact if we were to say, yeah, we don't approve the I S D because now their budget's split over a few or number of schools, so how does that work?
There's probably some membership, something.
Yeah, it it would not, um, it would. It it does not have to be a unanimous approval process from the member districts. Um, and so if a majority of districts uh opted not to support the budget, then they would have to.
Redress.
Sharpen their pencil and go back after.
I mean, I.
You know, so we're one of twenty districts, twenty alleys in the um within a county. Be bumpy.
Yeah, just curious, so it's just a wonder, thank you.
And if we're really going to build our work needs and read all our work methods.
Yeah.
It's all thing. Alright, here we go, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Okay, the third action item is the lawn care uh bids, and I would entertain a motion for as presented for Bob's Asphalt.
The most.
Score.
Discussion.
Just clarify, that is two thousand three hundred and seventy eight per cut, and I'm looking at uh the draft contract of about thirty cuts per year. And I'm looking at uh the draft contract of thirty cuts per year.
Welcome, both, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. The last action item, the high school leadership course proposal name change, I'll entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Question. Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. At this time, I would entertain a motion to move into closed session pursuant to open meeting act section H C and A H. For superintendent contract negotiations and safety and security planning.
So moved.
Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Okay, they're going to go ready.
My husband sent a picture of himself in the back.
Let's let the record show that we're rolling back in the open session at eight fifty four. And we have.
Writing that down for.
Yeah, eight fifty four. And we have before us um communications and for the Board of Education, they just snip clip. These dates, if you want to take one, pass it down. Passe, I know, but.
Don't you snip clips?
Couple of things.
Oh, okay.
And I've forwarded any communication that I have, so you're all up to date with whatever.
Talk about graduation real quick?
Sure.
Uh, we're all excited for me, like we did last year, that we wrote. And hiding up there.
I will get that information, okay.
And we are before the real day.
Well, my question was graduation. Adjacent, um, but it's about next year's graduation? So I'm wondering, and I don't know what, how this would look. But it's my son's graduation next year, and I will no longer be on the board, and people keep telling me, you should ask if you could go up there, and I'm like, I don't know how that would work. But I'm putting it out.
You know how it works.
Well, I know how it works.
I think we can help that happen.
Hmm, okay, so.
That's my personal opinion.
Just throwing it out there.
I'm just wondering, colleges do honorary degrees all the time to put her on the stage.
Oh.
We gave her a service award before.
Yeah.
I could go up on stage and nobody would even know, I would just sit there quietly until he came out of there.
Yeah.
Just have one extra chair.
Yeah, oh, she was on the board.
Let's investigate that.
Okay, I think we can, yeah.
Cool.
Can you have the other press?
Yeah, I had um great forums with staff, just sharing with them kind of where we are, state of the. The moment, state of the budget, I did meet um in person with the team at Red Hawk. Um, and that went okay, you know, they get it, and then uh. I didn't meet in person with the team at the middle school, I was, I got some feedback that they were wondering why they didn't get. Um, but but not the kind of asked more detail questions, because they were. Going to be impacted by the change, and so I zipped over there and they made some room for me in one of their um staff meetings, so that went really well. We had about a hundred people uh engage in the Zooms. Um, I also offered to meet one on one with people if they had any questions, and I had a couple of people taking me up on that, so. You know, it's been good so far. Um, yeah, it's hard news, but you gotta make it happen.
Thank you for that, there are lots of chances for people to tune in, yeah, then we had pre recorded one, so that was good.
Yeah, I did have a technical difficulty, one of the Zooms, they were, it was the wrong link that went out. And so no one was in, you know, I'm meeting it, it's six thirty on Friday morning, I was like, where is everyone? Well, I'm just gonna record this one and we're gonna go. Recorded by myself, and then I started getting texts, hey, no one can get in your meeting, so. We resolved it, we were ready for the next one at seven forty five. It worked, it worked okay.
Thank you, I've already covered planning, those are the dates, we're going, and we're coming back here again in two weeks. And then go from there, so having no other business before us, we'll stay in the journey at eight fifty nine. At fifty nine for.